The successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Hawthorne is called to order at 6:04 PM. Okay. Madam Secretary, the roll call, please.
Agency member Manning.
Here.
Agency member Montero.
He's been excused?
Agency member Patterson. Agency member Reyes English.
Here.
Chairman Vargas.
Here.
Madam Secretary, the guidelines for oral communications on this?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, "The public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in this special meeting agenda."
Is there anyone who wants to speak on the successor agency? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this topic closed. Can you please read item number one, Madam Secretary?
"A resolution of the successor agency to the Hawthorne Redevelopment Agency approving an agreement between the successor agency and Harrison Associates to provide the successor agency with various services associated with the successor agency administration, successor agency's tax allocation bonds and community facilities district, CFDS, and bonds for adoption."
I'll move.
Second. Please vote on this.
The votes are in. The voting reflects chairman and agency members voting yes.
If there's nothing further from agency members or staff, this meeting is adjourned at 6:05 PM. The September 24, 2024 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:06 PM. If I could have... Could you do the invocation today, Mr. City Manager? And the city attorney, if you could do the pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we pray for a good, successful meeting that leads us in the right direction for success for the state of Hawthorne. We pray for those that have lost family members this month and this year. We pray that you give them the energy to be successful and be resilient during these times. In God's name, amen.
Amen.
Put our hands over our heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our presentation from the police department. Can you please proceed with item number one? I thought we did, okay. Oh, that was for the previous one. Go ahead, roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero. Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, and all our elected officials. I'm here tonight to discuss something that's probably near and dear to all of our hearts, some of the quality of life issues, and really how to report them around our city in an effective way. As you know, every morning, we have an army of people that hit the street, whether it's Martinez Landscaping, our own city yard, our officers, our mental health team, hit all the different parks, all the different places that have been deemed to be hotspots, and they go out every morning and handle that. But we're not naive to believe that there are some things that fall in between the cracks. And if you're a community member here, if you live within the city, you need to know how to report that and get it done in a way which you're looking for the service to be done in a way you expect. And so you can call 911, that's one option. Can I send an email through the city website? Or probably your guys' favorite, do I call a city council member to call about an issue around the city? So I think we've all experienced that in some way or another. And so what we have is already a system within the city, which is our My311 app that we have through the city. It's on our website. And what it really allows us to do is all the quality of life issues that happen around the city, whether it may be the remnants of encampment, an encampment that's going up, illegal dumping, all those different things can be reported. It's back up. I didn't touch it. Yes, AI is in effect, yes.
AI is in effect.
I didn't do anything. Maybe it's just the TVs, huh?
How you doing? I'm Sergeant Raul Espinoza with the Hawthorne Police Department. We're doing a homeless outreach today.
Just not show mirroring on the screen, but I'm gonna talk anyways. We'll get to that in just a second. So the My311 app, what's the advantages? If you're just calling 911, if you're calling a council member, or if you're calling things through our website, that could be a two to three day lag time on getting it turned around from a response from the group of people that are supposed to be handling that issue. With the 311 app, essentially as you punch in your issue and you send it through the website or through your app, it hits everybody that's involved with that specific problem. So if it's an illegal dumping issue, we're gonna get hit with it. I actually get hit with all the emails, so does the other captain and the chief of police. So we all see it as a team come in, and so it can effectively be handled, in some cases be handled immediately. If it's a gathering of people experiencing homelessness or some sort of issue with that, then when that comes through the My311 app, three or four people are notified immediately and we can go out and deal with that issue. One of the good things about this, as the data comes in, when most people put in their complaint about what's going on, everyone's usually looking for some sort of feedback. And this allows us to, if you leave your information, we can follow up with you personally in regards to the status of what's going on with your complaint, how it's been handled, and what we can do in the future to continue to handle that issue. So it really works into that, engaging with the community, and it allows people to get what they really want, which is a conversation with somebody that is dealing with that problem head-on for them. And this platform allows us to make that connection head-on. It also allows us to kind of collect data on some places that are continuing to be issues, so we can start quantifying what's going on in a certain area. Have we continued to get complaints about a gate that's open somewhere constantly that keeps getting broken into, or a place where there's been illegal dumping? Allows us to start really tracking all that data and really put forth an effort to really quantify how to deal with those issues as a team, collaborating with the rest of our city heads, city department heads in the city. As you know, when we get all this information, and whether you know or not, bi-weekly, we meet as the City Improvement Task Force, led by the city manager, and we discuss all these issues with all the department heads and figure out the best way to pivot and find our way to deal with all these issues that are at hand throughout the city. You may have seen the video, you may have just started to see the video, I know Dulce has played it once or twice. But to have all of you here today, we really want to give you a peek of what happens almost every morning with Sergeant Espinoza, who's here tonight. He goes out with our mental team, with a few other detectives and officers, and our mental clinician. And for about every morning, two or three hours, we go and identify people that are looking for services, who need services, and then on the backend, we collaborate with Dulce and her team and get that done as well. So what I like to do is just show a clip of that video, just to kind of give a perspective of what's happening out there literally every morning on the streets.
How you doing? I'm Sergeant Raul Espinoza with the Hawthorne Police Department. We're doing a homeless outreach today. So we're trying to contact certain people that are living on the street and offering them services. And if they take them, it's a first step into getting them back on their feet, giving them the services that they need, whether it be medical services, addiction services, mental health services, and housing. So we have a team, an outreach team that goes out, contacts these unhoused individuals, and provides them the information that they need to take those steps to getting off the street and into a shelter, a home, or a hotel. So let's see if we can contact some people and get them some help. Good morning, man. How are you? How's it going? We're out here offering some services. Are you interested in housing? Getting your driver's license, a copy of your birth certificate, anything like that? Right here at the park, you know? Just depends on the day for them, you know? Sure, it's a hard, hard thing for them to get rehabilitation help and get back on their feet, accept services. A lot of them have mental health issues or addiction issues. And it's hard to take that first step to get better. So the more you're out here, the more you're in the community, kind of interacting with them. They gain more trust, they get to know you. And then one day, they're like, yeah, I'll take the help. And then hopefully, they use that to get back on their feet. Because they're able to provide a lot of services in one place, which is kind of nice. So this is one of the areas that we're probably gonna clean up. It just seems like it's trash. They kind of left it behind. So we'll try to see if we can clean it up, because there's kids that walk through here for school. There's a school right down the street on Broadway, and there's an elementary school right here, or a middle school, I should say. So it's kind of important for us to be aware of the trash and the needles and stuff that gets left behind.
There's some clients that we want them to show us out. We want them to come to the park every Monday to receive services. One of the clients has not come, so we're gonna go check in with her, see how she's doing. Next side? We're kind of closer to the backend, though, that's... Yeah. So we're along that one? All the way along the... So it makes it kind of dangerous. It's really close to a home. If this starts up, if there's more brush, it causes a safety issue. So the female that we had that was pregnant with the child, we had to take different steps to assist her. We had to take her, we had to call the Family Assistance Center, we called Downtown Loomis Center. We were calling multiple family shelters, and there was no beds available. So we had to go to the Catholic Charities to get a motel voucher for her. And we're assisting her to get her benefits in California, because she's from Arizona, which is something that we're encountering a lot, a lot of people from out of state that don't have no benefits. So we're still working on trying to get her placed. So the main reason we also carry this is because everyone's using Fennel now, and everything's laced with Fennel. So this is very effective in reversing those effects. 14, what did she say?
All right, so the fire department's gonna come. They're gonna take you to the emergency room? I don't want you to lose your feet, you know? You better worry about it. Now meth is no joke, huh? Kind of ruins your life.
How long have you been on the street again?
So in this case, we have a homeless person who's in really need of some medical attention. His feet are kind of like rotting, and he really needs to go. So part of the outreach is identifying a situation where this person may not have sought out help, but because we contacted them, they felt comfortable enough to ask for help. So now the fire department's able to transport him to a hospital, and hopefully they're able to fix his problem and more save his feet.
Like I said, that effort's going on five to six days a week, every morning here in our city. Again, some of the things that are highlighted in that video, trash, needles, all those things which are highlighted on the 311 platform are all things that should be reported through there to allow all of us at one time to be notified to go out and handle these situations. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Dulce.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Manning, council members. Thank you for allowing us to provide you this information. So as Captain Port mentioned, thank you. The emphasis on collaboration is what's making us tackle the unhoused situation and all the concerns that are coming in, not just through the 311 app. But we, because of the collaboration that we've implemented with departments throughout the city, from housing all the way to parks and recs, meeting on a regular basis and implementing new ideas or ways to tackle our unhoused situation. We have the video that you just saw, that happened back in April, May. So all that area has been cleaned through the collaboration from parks and recs and Public Works and so forth. So none of that looks like that anymore. But it wouldn't have happened without the collaboration and communication that needs to take place. And we took the lead from you all, from City Council. I think about Councilwoman Reyes English all the time, her words have stuck in my mind. The city of Hawthorne is a forward-thinking type of city, and because of our forward-thinking, we have implemented all these collaboration methods, not just within the city with various departments, but with outside agencies. And aside from the 311 app that Captain Port mentioned, we are implementing a direct email for businesses and residents that they've been using consistently since last month. They are reporting any unhoused situation or concern directly to the outreach team and/or calling the office directly. In addition to that, the Military and Veteran Affairs are gonna start implementing full-scope services, wraparound services to all our vets, family, and caretakers, starting tomorrow. So once a month, I'm pleased. We have about 10 vets already on the appointment schedule for tomorrow. In addition to that, our Community Mondays in front of the Homeless Services Office is close to two years. We've been providing full-scope medical care, not just to our unhoused neighbors, but the community in general is coming out seeking free medical care, receiving therapy counseling sessions, and in addition, they're meeting with the Department of Public Health and Department of Mental Health, one-on-one sessions with them, and referrals for those seeking services. So this is an example of what collaboration can implement and do for our most vulnerable in our community, and just our community as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, with that, that essentially wraps up our presentation, but I hope that I was able to offload some useful information for everybody here in the room, as well as you on the dais, as well as your contact throughout your day in business, about ways people can report some of the issues that they're dealing with around the city. Please, please, please steer them in that direction, but at the end of the day, you can always just give us a call directly. And with that, we'll take any questions you may or may not have.
Yeah, to the chair. Thank you so much for your presentation, and especially Dulce and over at the Intake Center. I think most folks know that it's right behind the Senior Center, located at the Memorial Center area. Up until about maybe three, four years ago, we didn't have anything like this. We weren't proactive. We can't control people coming into the city from various communities. We can't control that. But we surely can address the need when it comes to the unhoused and providing services, such as wraparound services, such as referrals, hotel vouchers, motel vouchers, medical assistance. More importantly, you know, this person needed emergency care, and that was immediate. And it's good to know that we have police officers among us here this evening that not only saw that, but more importantly, understand what our objectives are for the city to address these issues and how we go about that. But we can't do it alone. That's because we have collaborations from various organizations and groups to help us along the way. I know there's a lot of concern from businesses, because I get that quite often, when folks arrive at their business and they're trying to open their business door, and there's a person sleeping there or laying there, blocking their entrance. We get that. And we try to help to get them either a referral to a shelter, a hotel, motel, or get them on a list for emergency housing. I'm familiar with the outreach that you do, officer, with regards to every, you know, going every morning. I used to do the same thing. And I'd have to kick a person on the foot, just to make sure they're alive, right? And to get a reaction from them, so I could understand exactly what I need to do next. But all of this is important. I commend you all for what you're doing and continue to do, and, you know, through direction from the council, anything we could do to assist in that. We know there's a lot of, you know, funding sources that are needed, tools and assistance in various capacities, but that's what we're here for, and that's what we want to address, is the need for homeless, and how we could get folks off the street ultimately housed. So thank you so much for that.
Absolutely. To the chair. Thank you. Thank you, Captain Port, we really appreciate the presentation. You know, this is exactly what I had in mind when I lobbied for us to, for the city to have its own app. I remember when I ran for city council originally, it was a lot of communication out in the community as far as lack of communication with City Hall. And, you know, having an app allows everybody to communicate directly with City Hall. Don't need to know the right phone number, don't need to know the right person. You can report graffiti, and of course, some of the issues, quality of life issues that you just brought up. So very happy that, not only we introduced it, but that the city's really adopted it and has built it out. I did want to ask if it's possible that we can use the app in a way to communicate with those who have it in their phone and push out messages from City Hall to the community, whether it be about emergency services or if there's an emergency in the city, or just any kind of important news that, you know, should be shared with the community. You know, I found a lot of community members don't really know where to look for information about what's happening in the city and where to go. Of course, some know to go to the website, but just a lot just don't know. So, you know, Mr. City Manager, I'd probably be a better person to ask that, if you can look and see if it's possible to really have more two-way communication through that app and be able to push out notifications to those owners or those users of the app. And that way, we can do a big push to get the app in more people's phones and have a better communication with the community.
Notice staff will look into that matter.
Thank you, thank you.
To the chair. Thank you so much for your presentation. I remember us doing a homeless count, and I have to definitely recommend our staff and our police department, because our homeless count is down. We were about 200 and something a year or so ago, and now we're down to 100 and something. So we are definitely making progress in the project, the bridge house that we have. We're doing a number of things as it regards to supporting our homeless with the wraparound services that we have. And we're continuing to grow and be creative. We also have our telehealth van that we have out there assisting as well. And like Dulce said, it is so important to have collaboration amongst the providers, amongst the police, because we all work together as a team to provide services that they need. And especially being able to be compassionate enough to recognize that the help that they need, their emergency help, which goes right into the reason why I am requesting an urgent care center be facility be in our city. But thank you so much, so very much, for all your efforts in continuing to decrease and house our homeless population.
I want to echo the comments from my council member colleagues. I commend you, your team, the team, on all that you guys have done to be able to reach out. And I don't think we've highlighted this enough, but our homeless task force has been the model for South Bay agencies that have built their own homeless task force. So they've come to us and they've looked at what we've done. Everybody's trailed us, and so I guess we're the trailblazers in a sense. But I guess our dream is to one day rid this whole issue of homelessness, right? So that's really our goal. So I don't want to celebrate the fact that we have homeless, I just want to just celebrate the successes and the diminishing of the problem. So and what we're doing here in the city of Hawthorne through the group's efforts is leading us in that direction. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
The next presentation is from Mayor Protem Manning on urgent care.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So I have concerned citizens, and also my neighbors are going to be reading Jenny. If you could please come up and read the presentation. But before Jenny starts, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One in particularly is that urgent care centers play a crucial role in cities like Hawthorne, especially those with a population of 90,000. They provide critical bridge between emergency departments and primary care, ensuring that non-life-threatening conditions are treated properly without overwhelming the emergency rooms. The presentation that she's going to give, some of the resources that we got this information was from the Urgent Care Association of America, Los Angeles Department of Health Services, and California Health Line. These are some of the sources that I gathered the information to provide you the reasons why we should have urgent care in our city and the benefits of urgent care. And so Jenny, if you will... And I, I'm sorry, and she brought along some other people that are, that'll go... that are, that'll go ahead and chime in as well. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you all being here to support, support this effort in bringing urgent care to the City of Hawthorne. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do, I speak as a concerned citizen and as a registered nurse, who's really familiar with the challenges that we have in our healthcare system as a whole. And so, we wanted to put before you some reasons why we think an urgent healthcare facility is really urgently needed in Hawthorne, and some of the disparities that exist as a result of the lack of access to care in our community. So, we have a lack of access in the City of Hawthorne to accessible medical services. We really live within a health desert, meaning that our residents have to travel longer distances to access services, especially for those, not necessarily life-threatening, but urgent conditions. And this can be an exacerbation, exacerbation of an existing illness, or a temporary illness that they have, and this, if the lack of the urgent care leads to an increased burden on our emergency departments. We also generally within the city have limited healthcare facilities relative to some of our neighbor cities, and so that drives people to have to go to the emergency department for basic healthcare needs. We also know that we have existing health disparities within the city among our citizens. We have some socioeconomic barriers. Many of our citizens don't have access, they have financial barriers, so they may not have access to insurance. They may have higher copays, they have challenges receiving care due to some of their work schedules. They also typically have chronic health conditions, things like diabetes, hypertension, asthma. And without access to care, these things can go unmanaged, leading to subsequent exacerbations. And we have this preventative care gap related to some of the lack of access to care. And so, then as a result, we end up with overburdened emergency rooms, so we have a problem of ER overuse. And so, when we don't have urgent care to be a stopgap for some of these things, then people end up in the emergency room, and that detracts from the care that is truly needed to be delivered in the emergency room, and creates the long waits, and people leaving sometimes without being seen from the emergency room due to those long waits. And the emergency room is a really costly way to deliver care, and if we could get some urgent care services within the city, then that can help to alleviate some of those costs. And kind of speaking again about the health inequities that exist for some of our citizens, we know that this is really an impact disproportionately on low-income families and communities of color, and our senior citizens, and other vulnerable groups. And we also know that there are transportation challenges. Many of our citizens and neighbors rely on public transportation, and so those longer distances can be really challenging for them. And we think that with the existence of urgent care, we can ensure that care is more timely, so that those non-life-threatening but urgent conditions can be appropriately treated. And we can offset some of the pressure that is on, sort of on both ends, for the emergency rooms, but also for primary care physicians, because we don't have enough primary care physicians in the system as a whole, but certainly here within Hawthorne, to provide all of the care that is needed. So, in summary, we need an urgent care facility to address some of these health disparities and improve access to healthcare for all of our residents. And this would really provide a crucial service that's really a gap at this moment, to reduce ER overuse, make sure that we have timely access to care, and alleviate some of the challenges. And the benefits, we think, are some of what I spoke to, the efficiency of the ER, making sure that the patients who truly need to be in the ER are there, and those who aren't, aren't, make it more cost-efficient, because they're lower cost than ER visits, and that as a whole helps us, but also certainly on the individual level. We can help to enhance health equity by reducing some of the disparities, creating access points for care, so that folks can get care where they need it, and making it more accessible to them, so they're not having to travel longer distances. Urgent cares are also typically open, sort of outside of regular business hours, and so that creates opportunity for folks who have, you know, work schedules that aren't conducive to the sort of nine-to-five typical doctor's office hours. Alleviating our overstretched primary care physicians, whom we don't have enough, and improving continuity of care, so that when we really do the integration of urgent care with our local healthcare networks, with our primary care physicians, then we can create that sort of seamless continuity of care that we need for patients. Whoops, I think that's a duplicate. It also could have some really important economic impact for the city, so creating jobs for the folks that are working at the urgent care, and an investment in healthcare, which is a really vital and sort of crucial part of any city economy, and help us attract healthcare providers to work in Hawthorne. Can create efficiency and creating the walk-in flexibility that people need as they're attending to work schedules, life, caring for their families. They need that flexibility to have their conditions treated in a time and place that works for them. And then we think there's a really a piece of proactive community engagement. We certainly can think about the urgent care as another place where immunizations, we're in flu shot season, we're in time to get your next COVID shot, all of that, health screenings, preventative services, it's part of all of the network of care that we need within the community. And so, we really think it's an important component of access quality, helping to address healthcare disparities, and creating just a stronger healthcare system within the City of Hawthorne. Thank you. Anything you guys would add? No? Great.
That's it? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, I just want to have a discussion amongst my colleagues in terms of supporting that we bring our urgent care to the city.
To the chair. Thank you. Thank you greatly for the presentation, good information. Just to give you some history on Hawthorne and its efforts to try and bring a hospital emergency services to Hawthorne. Back in 2005, Vasek Polat Clinic opened on 133rd and Hawthorne Boulevard. It was the first of its kind that offered not just a walk-in clinic, but a clinic that took patients with no insurance and had to pay ultimately $50 to be seen. So, that was a great success. That was brought through Little Company of Mary, and they've been there, working successfully, taking patients, I believe, from eight to five. And then ultimately, they opened a new location across the street, which is also one of their other facilities. And then later in our years, I would say about 2017, 18, we made efforts to purchase the Hometown Buffet Restaurant, that's now closed, to bring Kaiser Permanente. We were met with, you know, obviously, challenges for, you know, trying to do the right thing, but opposition. So, there's been efforts from the council, from those that know the, that know the need and understand what the needs are. If we could find a way, we would definitely do that. Another, another history is RFK Hospital. We tried to work with RFK Hospital through congressional staff, through supervisory staff, to see how maybe we could come together with, you know, what's needed, which is dollars, money, and lots of it, so that we could be able to implement something like this. And obviously, we haven't had the, the money that is needed to open a facility like this, because it's not just opening a facility that isn't a new facility, but all the rehab that would have to go into it, to ultimately, you know, rehab it, open it, and, you know, operate it. So, there's a lot of moving parts to it. But those are just three examples, right? In the years here in the City of Hawthorne, how we've been making efforts to address the, the medical need, the community need with regards to urgent care. And so, I, I would like to ultimately, obviously Katrina, good work in bringing this to the council, through direction, on how we could possibly make that happen. Perhaps we need to bring in some, some folks that own property, that could maybe, you know, in collaboration, try and find some, you know, tax dollars, some monies from either, you know, the federal government, the state. But it's, it's going to be a challenge, just because there's so much money that's needed to operate something like this. But most definitely, the Vasek Polat Clinic, again, that, I've even had to use it, just because it was convenient, right? And even though I have insurance, I didn't mind paying $50, because I wanted immediate service versus me going out to Harbor City somewhere far, right? But yeah, we, I get it, and I would be more than happy to entertain something like this. If we could find a million, a millionaire, somebody that could give us philanthropy monies to start something like this, or possibly work with, you know, it would be a private, private-public partnership of sorts, yeah.
So, to the chair. So, Councilwoman English, that is one of the things that I'm proposing, that we go after partnerships, people that are interested in bringing their facilities to the City of Hawthorne. And so, there could be a number of interested parties, and so we would not necessarily have to start from scratch in terms of having to come out of our pockets to pay for it, but it would be a partnership. And I believe I have another person, Dr. Anthony Vincent, who's going to speak to that.
Thank you, council.
I think we have a comment? I did, thank you. To the chair. Oh, no, no, of course. I just want to ask the city manager, well, first, I want to say that I definitely support this, this idea, and thank you for bringing it to the council. Although it's something that, you know, we all hear all the time, we definitely need somebody to kind of say, hey, let's, let's do this right now. And I want to ask the city manager, if you could maybe conduct a study to identify the need for such services in the City of Hawthorne, and additionally, what are our options as a city, as a municipality, to help encourage such a business in the City of Hawthorne?
To the floor. Thank you, council, for letting me, letting me speak on this issue. I am a primary care doctor and a kidney specialist. I've worked in ERs, I've, you know, similar to the nurses here. We've kind of worked everywhere in healthcare. One of the things that, that I just want to speak to just briefly, is in this area, managed care changes how the footprint of health, what the footprint of healthcare looks like. I've worked in multiple different states, and managed care definitely changes that. So, in terms of your question, having a public-private partnership, there are lots of IPAs and different types of healthcare insurance companies who are moving towards the urgent care model, that you guys could capitalize on, to have them come in to be partners. So, I have one of my businesses here, and I'm actually expanding my clinical practice to this area. And so, it's going to be very vital to my practice to be able to have, as the nurse described, have these other acute services that are there. And they can be had by tapping into the managed care model, which isn't really anywhere else in the country. Hospitals are using the managed care model, for instance. I don't know if you guys know P.I.H. Downtown L.A. They're moving away from their ER and starting to build little urgent cares because of the cost of these things. And it's also good for your constituents, because if they do have to have a copay, or have a percentage of cost, the percentage of cost goes along with whatever the cost was to that hospital ER versus an urgent care. The, the cost of an urgent care is volumes less than ER care. She spoke to it just a little bit, but it's, I mean, it's orders of magnitude less expensive. And it affords people the opportunity to get right in there and be able to get the care that they need without having to sit and wait. I've had people sit and wait in an ER, leave, and then a problem that could have been handled in an urgent care, then festers, and they wind up in an ER with a more exorbitant cost. Length of stay is something that health plans really look at in terms of that. And so, they're trying to use the urgent care to stave off length, you know, lengthy stays and everything. So, you know, just, just look into these IPAs, health plans, anybody who would want to collaborate on that, and it doesn't have to be one. That's what everybody fails to understand. It could be four or five of these guys who are moving into your area, trying to sign your constituents up for their health plans. That's where you can leverage it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for bringing this before the council, and there definitely is a need for urgent care closer to home. Sometimes we end up going to Manhattan Beach, you know, there's something over there on Pacific Coast Highway, further out towards Los Angeles Avenue, there's another urgent care. You know, then there's urgent care in Torrance, obviously, right? And then there's that hospital, Little Company of Mary. So, there, there is a need, absolutely. And, but I really just want to, not caution, but just if we're going to be attracting and working with some of these urgent cares to locate here, the challenge, how are we going to convince some of these developers to be able to abandon their projects for what they've been wanting, and allow for there to be urgent care to be built in those facilities? We've already tried it at the RFK Hospital. The gentleman there doesn't want that. He wants to build up, he wants to build 100 units per acre, and he doesn't want, he, this is, it used to be a hospital. We've been taking people to him, but no, he wants to build 100 units per acre. That conversation is dead. We've tried, everybody here on the council has tried futilely. So, there's other developers also, like over here across this street, over here at the Hawthorne Mall, perfect corner of the location, you know? I, I know we do have Providence right there, right? But what about the additional urgent cares, as the gentleman, as the doctor had mentioned? So, there's challenges, there's places, but there's a, we don't have the most cooperative developers around here, so. But then, I also, of course, we should be working on bringing some of these urgent cares, but not all urgent cares and not all medical operations are built the same. Okay? There's been changes. I mean, there's, quality of care has sacrificed, has, has suffered. And it's about how many people can you process versus the quality of care too. So, we need to be careful that if we're going to be engaging with certain peoples, that it's a quality program with a good reputation as well, not just any, any operation we'll do. We need to have something that's good, and has five stars, that's located here in the City of Hawthorne, not just to meet a quota. We just need to make sure it's a good operation or multiple operations. So, I think this is great. I appreciate you bringing this before us.
To the chair. Just want to close out. Vaughn, I'll give you some direction. The way we do this is bring people to the table to have a discussion, whoever they may be, public dollars, zoning to unlock private projects. So, I know we, we have property, the city has property. We could always take a look at that and see what we're going to do with that. I know housing is a, is a, you know, priority for, for all of us, more housing, but, you know, we could always entertain other types of projects that benefit the community of Hawthorne. So, having said that, again, zoning, public dollars to make private projects, and collaboration with those entities that may be interested, including investors. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to be clear that I have support from my colleagues to move forward in pursuing urgent care. Is that a yes?
You just gave direction.
Thank you. Just wanted for the record. Thank you.
Let's see. Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body, and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Braun Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Bill Myers.
Mr. Mayor and council, I am William Myers, the acting chair for the Ramona Neighborhood Association. I'm here simply to remind you that we are having a forum for the mayorial candidates on Thursday night at 6:00 down at the Ramona School on, in my tract. And I'm hoping that a number of you will, I see two of the candidates in front of me. I see two of the candidates in front of me. And I'm hoping that we'll have a, a nice crowd to, to, to review your, your candidacy for the next year. Thank you.
Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I have several things. September 30th, we're sold out for our golf tournament, which is a first time. It's our 10th annual. It's going to be at Rio Hondo. So if you would like to come to dinner, just let us know. It's going to be buffet dinner. It's going to be wonderful. And that's September 30th. October 30th, for Halloween, we're going to do a trunk or treat at 6:00 P.M. I'm working with the city manager Vaughn to find a location of where we will do this. So it'll be food put into the trunks with tons of candy for the kids. So that will be October 30th. And then, another thing is, I just want to make mention before I introduce one of our new members of the chamber, is the Hawthorne Chamber cannot and will not endorse any, anyone running for whatever they're going to run for. Earthquakes. We're having a lot of earthquakes lately. And I've been to Dr. Lucy Jones, well, her forums, and she said that this is leading up to maybe not the big one, but one like we had in Northridge. So what I want to give out to the city council and to the city clerk and, and to the city manager and city attorney is these, this is what we've given out from the Red Cross to tell you what you need in case there's a major earthquake. I am very prepared, always have been for probably about 30 years. But she said, Dr. Lucy said, that, that 80% of Californians are not prepared for a major earthquake. So this is what you really need to get in order to be prepared. Okay, now, the last thing I have is, we have a new member. We have several new members, but one member that I got to come tonight is Dr. Rochelle McCoy and her husband. And this is our plaque. And then you can stand up here, give your name, and tell what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. I'm Dr. Rochelle McCoy. We just opened, this is my husband Noah McCoy. We just opened up a veterinary clinic in Hawthorne. We are right across, we're on Rosecrans Avenue, right across Costco. So right in the, where Blaze Pizza is at. So, we are happy to be in the community and thank you so much for the plaque. We're very excited to be here. We see dogs. I only see small animals only, dogs and cats. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuela and Arminia Balboa.
Good evening, city council, staff, public, the public at home too. Good times are here again. We're having our Cuban Festival next Sunday, September 29th, at the same place, at the Jose Martí Club, 12141 Prairie Avenue, two blocks from the Memorial Center. They'll provide some parking at the Memorial Center for the attendees. And we're having raffles. We're having a Grammy-nominated band playing, DJ, raffles, a lot of Cuban food. And we hope we can see everybody there to celebrate. And this is the club 55th anniversary. And we're very proud of sharing our culture with everybody in the city. And thank you to everybody that have cooperated so far and are really behind this. And I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the city council? I see one person. Go ahead, sir. Two people.
Hello, everyone. Name is Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. During this period of time in history of the United States of America, we, the people, are faced with important decisions about the quality of life during the 2024 elections. While style and personality of an individual is a consideration by the voters, the solution to problems confronting the people is far more important as candidates vie for public office, federal, state, county, local government in these elections. The following issues, of which there are many, are having a major impact on the people in our communities across the nation due to various decisions of elected officials and appointed bureaucrats, who may lack the will to solve the problems or choose to ignore the will of the people. One, economics, very much on people's minds. Cost of living has greatly increased for expenses related to housing, food, energy, healthcare, amongst many other things. Two, immigration. The residents, business owners, law enforcement officers, healthcare providers, schoolteachers, local government officials, and so on are greatly affected economically, socially, and otherwise by millions of people who enter our country from around the world. As we approach the November 5th election, I hope that every voter will base choices for their candidates or decisions on issues with objectivity and common sense. So let us do our part to make America great again.
Right.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy. I live in Hawthorne. I just had a couple of questions. It's my first time here. You guys, someone on the council mentioned that there was a count of homeless individuals in the city of Hawthorne, that it was previously 200, and now it's 100 and something. I just wanted to know who performed that count? And is it accurate? And how could regular citizens get more involved with the situation? Because it's really out of control. And secondly, whenever you guys found out about the 3-1-1 app, it would be great for citizens to get that information because I didn't even know until last week about the 3-1-1 app. And so I know many members of my community would greatly appreciate that. And thirdly, tonight, I heard about the urgent care situation. There's a urgent care or medical facility on El Segundo near Van Ness and El Segundo Boulevard, because I've gone there. And also, there's one near Douglas in El Segundo Boulevard. And I frequently go there with my son. So I didn't, I wasn't clear about the need for urgent care, like, really being built here because they're, both facilities are, like, within, like, three miles or four miles. And so I was just interested to know, like, where would this new urgent care be built and whatnot? Even though we could probably use another urgent care, but there are facilities that are near and easy to access.
Could you use the microphone? We could probably hear most of that.
Do you want me to repeat it? Okay.
Right to the time.
I'm sorry. So I was just concerned about, wondering about the urgent care because there are, like, three facilities on El Segundo Boulevard that I've used and I know that they're available to most residents. I was concerned about the homeless situation. How can regular citizens get more involved? And the app. I know a lot of members in my community. I live in Parkside Village, and I know, nobody there hardly knows about the 3-1-1 app. And it's really a great tool for anybody to get, you know, more information. Like, this is my first time here tonight, but I'm going to tell my, my neighbors about it. And it would be very helpful if you guys, like, somehow find a way to announce it and promulgate it throughout the city. So thank you.
Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Mayor, could you just get in contact with her and just pass along the information?
Absolutely. I would encourage you to follow us on social media, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, X. We have the information there. And then we have our housing director to my left. She can put you in touch with our homeless coordinator. Thank you.
Did she reach?
Right there. Thank you.
Can the housing coordinator please step outside and meet with her?
Hello, Mayor, city councilman. Hi, Mr. Vargas. I met you at Tina McKinney's fundraiser.
Okay.
And I kind of jumped on you about the budget.
That was you.
Yeah, it was me.
You're here.
Yeah, so, yeah, just, just, I want to address something really quick, some foolishness y'all just heard, this Make America, you know, Great Again nonsense. You know, if you, if you do your homework, you realize that overstayed visas are outpacing people coming on their border. And, you know, you want, really want to get down to it? We're, we're right now in Mexico territory. It was stolen from there. So we got to stop this border crossing stuff. They're not crossing the border. They're coming home. So anyway, move on from that. I am, I come to support the urgent care. So I went to Hawthorne High School, played Hawthorne, was a track star, football star here. And I remember one time, we were having a football game. One of our players had a heart attack. So we were, I remember, it was like it was yesterday. We were, like, all happy. We were winning the game. And then he got in the game and he fell, and he wasn't moving. So they were able to take him to Hawthorne High, Hawthorne Medical Center. And I just remember, at the time, you know, I was a young man, so I didn't realize the importance of it. But there is an emotional stability in having a healthcare in your local city. I mean, I mean, I know business is important. I know public works is important. I know, you know, any type of housing is important. But if you don't have health, you don't have anything. So according to the, the College of Medical Research, 50% of, of emergency visits are not emergency. So imagine the burden it puts on our, our local. My grandmother, my mom is 84. I have to take her to Little Company of Mary. She has to wait for 10 hours. She's 84 years old. But I was able to take her to the one you talked about on, the urgent care on Sepulveda.
Sepulveda?
So I took her there. The doctor wrote her a letter. And then he said, look, take your mom to urgent care. I took her to urgent care. She got right in. So it's a good pathway to get into urgent care. So listen, I understand that money is tight. You know, I look at Hawthorne as like job. You're just overbroke. But what we can do is, if we have to propose a tax and propose that to the residents, like the Sint Eller Valley School did, when they proposed that tax, they rebuilt all the schools, I, I'd be for that. If we can put a non-pork-belly tax on the ballot saying, hey, this is the money we need to get a, a urgent care. I'd even promote it for you, for real. I mean, because that's, those are things that I think residents will, will get behind. Also, too, let's throw a tax and do something with that big turd across the street. I mean, that thing's been there since 1999. I mean, is it a historical landmark or what? But, look, I understand things are complicated. It's expensive. It's privately owned. I get that. But as, as residents, I know you guys have a difficult job. I know there's varying opinions up here. But whatever we can do to help, if we have to propose a tax, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good seeing you again. Next, please.
Hello, Mayor, city council. Wasn't going to speak, but I'd put some thoughts earlier, and I just thought I'd share them. I want to see if we can get a, some sort of letter of solidarity with the city of Springfield, Ohio. As you know, there is a, there's some misinformation and lies from one of the presidential candidates about the eating of cats and dogs, which is completely ridiculous. So I'd like to see if, you know, maybe the city can do a proclamation or a city of support for our fellow citizens in Springfield, Ohio. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and friends and neighbors. I wanted to address something on item 15. I see that you're going to be dealing with the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program tonight. One of the things that I realized relatively recently is that the city of Hawthorne does not participate in the HUD-VASH program, which is the HUD program with vouchers for supportive housing for veterans. There have been some changes in the HUD-VASH law within the past couple of weeks that are very, very, very important. And I think it would behoove our city to get involved with HUD-VASH. There's a lot of money available and a lot of help that would be available that we could really use in our community. So I have the contact information for the people to reach out to, but I believe our housing department is already looking into that. I just wanted you on the council to be aware of it. And please get involved in the HUD-VASH program as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't see anybody else, so I'll declare oral, oral communications closed, ordered. Madam Clerk, your items, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have eight items on the consent calendar. They're items three through 10 for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for September 24th, 2024. Item five, resolution number 8487, a resolution of the city council of the city, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting tax-advantaged bond issuance compliance procedures. Item six, resolution number 8488, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, in support of Proposition 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. Item seven, resolution number 8489, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving, authorizing, and ratifying the submission of the State of California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, the STEP program. Grant number PT 25094. Item eight, resolution number 8490, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving, authorizing, and ratifying the submission of the State of California Office of Traffic Safety, Safety Motorcyclist Safety Education and Training Program. Grant number MC 25003. Item nine, resolution number 8491, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving an agreement between the city and Harrison Associates to provide the city with various services associated with the city's 2024 lease revenue bonds, 2019 POBs, POBS, 2016 certificates of participation in community facilities districts, CFDs and bonds. Item 10, resolution number 8492, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming September 15th, 2024, through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Hawthorne, California, for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, I just wanted to let people know that Councilmember Mottaro was excused. He called us. So everything's good. Okay? Because I don't think we got to mention it during roll call. All right. Ma'am, go ahead.
Next, we have a bid opening. Item 11, now is the time and place to declare publicly, receive sealed bids for project number 24-02, A New City Yard. There was one bid received. It was accompanied by a bid bond, bidder's bond. The price is as follows. Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Silmar, Only one bid.
Okay. All right. We'll accept a motion? I make a motion to accept the bids?
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Of Mr. City Attorney? So our agenda was purposely xed out on some of those elements?
That's actually done because they don't know the number until people come in to give me the number.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation, ma'am. General Matters, Madam Clerk?
Item 12, fire services agreement for project 24-02, New City Yard. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
If I can interject before the vote, I think, City Clerk, you read the item incorrectly. You mentioned public works yard, but it's for fire contract. For the record, if we could reread.
It's number 11.
We're on number 12.
Okay, we're on number 12.
And it says New City Yard.
Fire Services.
Number 12?
General Matters.
Fire Services.
Yeah, Fire Services Agreement for Project, and it says New City Yard as part of the script.
It's not the city yard, so.
Okay.
If I may, it's.
Let's get that clarified before we put it on the record.
The Fire Services Agreement with the Consolidation Fire Protection District of Los Angeles.
Let's see, yeah, let's make sure, ma'am, so you don't have to do it more than once. It's right.
I see. So, uh, number 12 is Fire Services Agreement with the Consolidation Fire Protection District of Los Angeles.
This does not require a vote.
Okay. It's for the, just to be introduced, right? Is there a motion to introduce needed?
No, there's no vote needed.
City Manager's Contra, uh, Consent Calendar?
Items, uh, seven items on the City Manager's Consent Calendar. Item 13, approval of an agreement for homelessness coordination between the City of Hawthorne and St. Margaret Center. Item 14, progress payment number six and final acceptance in the amount of 108,700, 108,870 due to Sequel Contractors of Santa Fe Springs, California, for Northeast Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project, number 21-05. Item 15, Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher, award of additional administration, administrative fee, funding for small area fair market rentals implementation. Item 16, agreement with the City of Inglewood for supplemental law enforcement services for special events in the City of Inglewood. Item 17, receive and file Housing Authority Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2023, 2024. Item 18, professional services agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Kim Lee Horn. Item 19, appropriation of $328,789 from 325-6101-601-0-0-40514 for Jim Thorpe Ball Diamond Improvements by Community Services Department. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 13 through 19?
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Pulling item 16. If we could clear the votes, please, cause I'm trying to. Okay, thanks.
I make a motion on 13, 14, 15, 17, 18 and 19.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in.
Discussion on 16, please.
Thank you. I just want to make mention that, you know, our police officers work very hard to help through mutual aid, the City of Inglewood. As we all know, they have SoFi Stadium, the Intum Dome, and it's really an undertaking for the officers of Inglewood to, um, take hold of all the activities that are taking place over there, let alone the concerts, let alone, you know, the plays. I mean, I could go on and on and on and on. And we knew that eventually they were going to need assistance from either, you know, Hawthorne, they're going to need assistance from, you know, Gardena, even sheriffs. I mean, it's just a, a big undertaking. So I want to just provide my kudos to them and want to assure the residents of Hawthorne that the bill for the services rendered for our police officers are paid from the City of Inglewood and not the City of Hawthorne. And there isn't any, um, uh, things such as, you know, overtime and all this other stuff that, that the city is putting on our city budget. It's all Inglewood and it's being paid for by such. So I just want to make that clarification for those folks that might think otherwise and then commend all of the officers that spend their weekends and, and sacrifice that, that time uh, to work when they could be at home with families. And so, um, keep them safe and, um, you know, thank you for what you do Hawthorne Police.
I move.
Are we moving on the other items as well?
No, we didn't, we didn't vote on those?
Wait, I didn't get a chance to announce those votes.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay. Well, it's, there you go.
Minus number 16?
Yep.
The mayor and council voting yes.
Oh, I, okay.
Now we can do item 16.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I see how you programmed those in, so it like reflects that on there. So.
Yep.
All right. I make a motion on 16?
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
I barely noticed that, that it shows up right there. So thank you. Uh, City Attorney's Consent Calendar, ma'am?
City Attorney's Consent Calendar, item 20, Claim for Bodily Injury by Matthew Marin. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Matthew Marin. Item 21, Claim for Bodily Injury by Gabrielle Rivera. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Gabrielle Rivera. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Attorney's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 20 and 21?
I'll move items 20 and 21.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Mr. City Treasurer, your report for the evening?
Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I just want to say, you know, that was such a very impactful report that the HPD gave on the homeless issue. So prayers and safety to the gentlemen who go out and, you know, serve that every day. Um, I want to say congratulations to the Finance Department for their Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GFOA last week. So kudos and congratulations on that reward. Um, the Fed did cut rates this, uh, last week, but it was only by a half a percent. So that's a good thing. Uh, the treasury, uh, that we had invested in the 5.4 million, we yielded 5.6. So that was good. We, Felisa and myself agreed to let that roll over for another six months and we'll look further into how that will be invested, um, when it matures in six months again. So thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Ms. City Clerk?
Hello, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I would like to give a special shout out to my mom and my uncle. My uncle's traveling from Detroit, Michigan, and, uh, we have been excited to have him for the last few weeks and had a lot of fun. Uh, wanted to, uh, thank the staff and of course, our amazing city manager, Von Norris, on the wonderful new senior center that is coming. It is going to be just amazing. And it's indicative of the progress that we are making under his leadership and under the council's leadership as well. Uh, so I just want to thank everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and, uh, we'll see you all soon.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, Councilmember David Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, um, want to thank the community for coming out and making your voices heard and really speaking up about the things that are important to you and of course, hearing the decisions that are being made here, um, at these council meetings on your behalf. I want to thank our city staff for all of your hard work and dedication to the city and of course, our police department as well. Uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community over the last few weeks about various different issues. And I've reached out to the city manager for support and of course, he's, he's addressed them, uh, right away, which I appreciate. And some of those cases has required the police department to get involved. And I really appreciate, uh, our officers for being very responsive, uh, to those issues for the community. And the community appreciates it as well. Got a few recommendations based upon a few, uh, kind of concerns and complaints in the community. Uh, Mr. City Manager, is it, can you look into see if there's any monies available, uh, for double pane windows for the homes in our, in the flight path? Uh, as well as, um, maybe educate us on some, what we can do if we identify any planes that are not following the proper flight path and how we might can report that. Uh, there's a couple of streets I'd like to ask for traffic studies. Uh, one on 116th Street between Casimir and Spinning. If, uh, you know, see if that, something's necessary for speedy humps there, as well as in Bajra Park on Cranbrook Avenue. Uh, they have some issues with, with some speeding in their neighborhoods. Uh, I want to ask if we can put together a proclamation for Ruby Cohen, uh, for her contribution to our 9/11 ceremony that we had this month. Uh, her, her speech and her presentation was, uh, was just a great gift to the community and want to recognize her for that. I also want to see if there's, um, possibility that we can maybe install a turnabout on, on Wilton and Darling Love, uh, Street. I don't know if it's a street or avenue, but, uh, Alec Simon had that idea and I thought it was a pretty good idea. And maybe a, a good strategy to kind of slow down traffic going down Wilton, uh, Wilton Avenue. And, uh, that's all I got. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of events that I attended, I want to thank the I Love You Foundation. It was a mega blood drive in, in Marina Del Rey. Uh, there were so many thousands of people that came for the blood drive. Um, I had the pleasure of, uh, being VIP with Derek Fisher from the Lakers and Mr. Mayhew from, um, the Red Sox. So we had a basketball and baseball. Um, so thank the We Love You or I Love You Foundation for their efforts on the mega blood drive. Um, I also want to, um, acknowledge the grand opening we had, or the, the groundbreaking we had today for our senior center. Um, so excited for that, our three capital projects all together. It's been something that we've been discussing and it's here as far as, you know, the groundbreaking is finally here. And I'm just so excited for, um, our seniors. I'm also excited for our Public Works Department with their new yard and I'm so excited for us here at City Hall. Um, we're going to be coming, walking in to a new city hall and it's just going to be amazing uh, to be able to do our first city council meeting in a new city hall. And I look so forward to that. And for folks that don't know, we broke ground during the summer. Uh, we own Bank of America and so that's going to be the opening of the underground parking and it's going to go up and it's going to be beautiful and it's going to be for the community. And so very happy about that. I also want to acknowledge our Human Resources Department. They hosted an end of summer barbecue for our employees. That was a great, um, event. I came out and participated. We had barbecue. I think everyone, everyone enjoyed, uh, just the camaraderie and everybody getting together. It was the end of summer and, uh, I look forward to fall. So that was a great event and I want to thank Human Resources and Vaughn for helping and, um, Kinetka that ultimately was the sponsor for that program. Um, everybody had great fun. There was also, let's see, a couple of things here. Um, want to continue the discussion on a potential, um, urgent care. That's very important. And, uh, we've given, we've given instructions on maybe how to do that. Um, you know, calling Kaiser and see if they're, if they're still interested in something like this, most definitely. Um, let's see. I want to be able to, uh, provide a, a donation to the Cuban Festival that's going to be hosted this weekend. Um, if you could get from my stipend, all of the council members are given a stipend. And when there's, um, events and, um, functions happening, uh, that we could contribute to that cause, we, we do that out of discretion from our funds. So if I could, um, do 500 on that, that would be great. Um, let's see, we're going to, um, you know, everybody's discussing, you know, legislation and, um, propositions and whatnot on the ballot. I really want everyone to pay attention to that. Um, you know, back in 2014, there was Proposition 47, you know, where it reduced felonies to misdemeanors. And now we have crash and grab. Now we have, um, you know, pirate, you know, stealing your Amazon and goods. You have property crime. You have your cattle converters being stolen. And I could just go on and on and on. And at the end of the day, it's just a tap, tap and, uh, you know, they'll go do it again. So really pay attention to our propositions that are out there, especially the one that, um, they want to put more teeth, uh, which is, you know, the proposition of, uh, I believe 36.
36.
And we've been, we've been having discussions up here because, um, as council members and representatives of the people, it's the people that we hear from and it's the people that ultimately, uh, give us their, their grief. And, um, you know, I've had my fair share of, of, of being, you know, robbed and everything else too. So, you know, I was jumped on 51st and Slauson in LA, you know, six months from Idaho. And that was quite a scary thing for me. So I'll never forget that, but I'm the better for it because I now, um, I dare anyone to jump me on the street. But, um, I just want to say, you know, we have really great efforts here. There's really great projects coming. There's so much going on, especially in our, you know, 100 million cash reserves and our 2.4 million and, uh, I should say in cash and then our reserves of 2.4 million and then just being recognized like the treasurer just made mention, your certificate. And I know you're thinking it's, you know, so modest, but you, you're truly a champion for our finance department. So stand up Felice, we want to give you an applause for all that you're doing. And your team. We want to recognize your team too. Your team is very important. Um, you know, I, I, I know that we had, um, what was it? A, um, chief, the, we had a, a license check or a DUI check at some point. I just want to acknowledge that there was, um, some arrests there and there was also, uh, because of warrants, things like this. I mean, you know, people come by and sure, you know, you're, everything's good. You wave, you know, I've been in one of those too. I got stuck in one of those two. They see, you know, you haven't drank anything, had anything to lick and then you're gone, right? But you'll be surprised. People show up, uh, and, and, uh, there are some other things happening with them, right? So it's all about keeping our community safe. It's all about, um, assuring that we have safe streets for everyone and families because each and every day when we turn on the TV, you just hear horrific stories of, you know, families and, and accidents occurring. And so I'm glad that we're a small city and we're taking care of our own when it comes to this. And I'm also glad that the city of, uh, our City of Hawthorne Police Department has a newsletter that comes out and it provides information. And I, I really want the community to be able to subscribe to that because all your information is there. It doesn't have to be redundant by continuously asking questions. You could see everything on this, on the newsletter and it's so informative. And then you could pass that along to your neighbor or your, your association, your neighborhood association. So I just want to thank, uh, folks for doing that too. Um, let's see. I know I'm missing some other things. I, I really like the idea of a Springfield, uh, Springfield, Ohio letter as a Latina, as a grandma of eight. Uh, again, my parents born and raised in San Antonio, Texas, migrated to Idaho where I was born and my family in Oregon and Washington. Um, you know, it was very disparaging to hear things like this. And so from me, I'm only one representative, but I have a large, uh, voice for many folks like me. I would like to see how I could send a letter to the city manager of, uh, of, uh, Springfield, Ohio in solidarity. And, um, definitely, I don't know if anyone else would like to sign on to that, but from me, I would be more than happy to send that letter and, um, let them know that we're, we're with them.
I'd like to jump on that letter as well.
Add me too.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. Appreciate that, members. Um, LAX, Katrina and I sit on the LAX Area Advisory Committee. And so when, uh, residents ask about double plane, uh, windows for, uh, noise or they want, uh, assistance with regards to, um, addressing noise, uh, everyone knows, I've lived here 40 years, everyone knows that we have the Hawthorne Airport. Everybody knows the flight path. You know, when, when it's bad weather, you just flip it and they fly out the opposite direction, right? And those, and, and planes fly over, um, you know, the community that's there. But, um, as advisory committee, we advise the LAX, um, the more, the, the committee that has more teeth than we do, right? But it's good to know that there's folks that are inquiring and asking questions because we, we've already brought these questions to the advisory board and LAX. So it's really the people that are living under the LAX area because those are the big jumbo jets. Those are the international flights and those are, you know, the, the truly the big, big airplane, aircraft. But, um, having said that, we could probably ask, um.
Yeah.
Councilmember Patterson, um, some of your questions with regards to, you know, constituents' concerns on, uh, noise, um, air traffic noise. Um, other than that, um, yeah, I really liked the police department and their presentation to us on addressing our homelessness and how they are, uh, hands-on. And I just want to recognize too, our community policing, which is the trailer that goes out and sets up in the community so that you could come and talk to your police and you could get to know who they are. They can know who you are. And it's, uh, a community-driven efforts to address concerns in an intimate setting where you come to the trailer and you discuss your concerns and they, and then ultimately you get them resolved, right? So those are very important and, um, can't say enough, uh, for our police. And that's about it. I mean, there's a Fiesta in the Park this weekend. I don't know if the mayor was going to announce it, but I'll, you know, I'll let you announce that. There's other great things happening. I know we've got a time limit, our Military Veterans Affair, you know, homeless services, the Touch a Trunk, October 5, our Water Harvest, October 5, um, Halloween, uh, Spooktacular Carnival. That's, um, Saturday, October 26th from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Um, I'm not a Halloween person, but you know, uh, those that, that love Halloween, let's see. Uh, our Community Mondays, which are homeless services, medical, um, uh, medical, mobile counseling services, substance use and abuse, mental health services. I mean, I mean, we've really taken off with services, um, referrals and, and, um, social services. So that's all awesome, all good. And I think I'm gonna end it there. Thank you so much.
Should have said something.
No, go ahead.
No, I want you to talk about.
I want to give you.
No, no.
I want to give you some things. I want to give you some things to talk about.
The first one, we set up the first one.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, alright. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I want to first say thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, thank you so much uh to Dr. Vincent, Dana, Andrew and Jenny um for your wonderful presentation. Thank you for your time to share this information with our council, um with our community about the importance um of having that urgent care in our city. So thank you so much um for your expertise and the information um that you shared. Also, um Patricia Donaldson brought up a very good point. Um, the, the last two or three earthquakes that we had, when I tell you I was super scared, I was super scared. And so I think it's really important um that we start to focus on providing information. So I, city manager, I'd like if we could maybe take the information that she provided and put that on um our website as to, you know, how to prepare and maybe even um reach out to someone where we can maybe have a class or something uh provided to um our residents about how to prepare. Um, I would be thoroughly interested in coming uh to hear what they have to say. Uh, cause I know that um, that's really important. And I also wanted to ask, do we have an emergency center in the city of Hawthorne? So that if we do have an earthquake, um, do we have somewhere for our residents um to go? And I think we had one years ago, but I don't know um if that's still the case. But if you could uh look into that and let me know about that, I greatly appreciate it. Um, also.
I could make mention, Katrina, we're looking for an emergency prepar- preparedness person. It's, it, there's a job uh listing.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, also, um, put on my glasses. Ooh, I love that. Um, the other thing that I wanted to make mention is if you can also uh, city manager, look into the Hut Vash Program that was mentioned. I really think that's important and especially since we are always honoring our um veterans all the time and trying to make sure that we do more to include supporting them. If you could definitely uh see about us getting those funds. And then also, I was just thinking when you talked about, what you talked about in terms of uh providing panels um for the windows and stuff like that, I would think that if we apply for a mobility grant, um, there's tons of grants out there to see if we could use a mobility grant to um give to those folks that live in the area um of the flight pathway. So mobility means all levels. So I would um ask you, city manager, um to search to see if there's any uh mobility grants out there that we could use. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the groundbreaking of the Senior Citizen um Center today was an amazing um event. Although I, I was not there for the shoveling, I had to leave. But um, just the renderings, what's gonna, what's coming, it just means we're moving forward. And I want to thank me, no, I'm just kidding. I am so grateful that uh we are moving forward and we're going to be having a senior, a new senior center. And one of the reasons that I look forward to it because I'll be there soon, right? So I'll be enjoying the services myself. So I, I look forward to my daughter taking me there and being able to enjoy those services. And then last but least, um. Um, last but least, um, as I mentioned to you at the last council meeting that I had the privilege of attending the um Congressional Black Caucus um in DC. And when I tell you I had an amazing experience, um, the, the last day ended with um our president and our vice president uh coming out to talk to us. And for me, that's an over, it's just an exhilarating feeling um to be there, to, to witness what potentially our future um could be uh in the coming years. And some of the workshops that I had an opportunity to attend talked about the importance of um healthcare. Um, so I was truly inspired when I was there. I was inspired to do more and to want more. And we also talked about um small businesses that fifty-two percent of the economy is ran by small businesses and how important it will be to give money to those businesses to help them flourish because they are going to carry our economy. The other thing that we talked about, which is very new to me, was the new thing is cybersecurity. Um, they strongly encourage folks to start taking classes um because that's going to be the new jobs. They talked about financial cybersecurity. Um, and I thought that was interesting, but they were strongly encouraging us to tell folks, whatever you do, technology and cyber, in the cyberspace is going to be the new jobs that are going to be providing good-paying jobs and um just good information. So I would like to pass that information along to tell you all. Tell your kids to sign up for cybersecurity or cyber, anything with the word cyber in it. Um, there's all kind of levels of cy- cyber, but make sure that you sign up for it. Have your kids or whoever you know sign up for. Uh, there was a young lady, well, it was a lady on the panel. She was about fifty-four years old, starting her career over. And she went back to school to learn and she took some classes to learn about cybersecurity. And now she's a supervisor um in the government, teaching or leading the way in cybersecurity. So they talked so much about it. I was thinking, maybe I should go back to school and learn cybersecurity. So anyway, um, that's it for me. Thank you so much. Oh! And then I have to mention, my beautiful, wonderful colleague knew that I wanted this purse. And she bought me, council, councilwoman Reyes English, Angie, bought me this purse um after I threatened her for not getting me one when she got one. So um, it comes full circle. Uh, I have this purse and I had an opportunity to be in that room with our uh vice president and our president. So thank you so much, everybody. Good night.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Nothing? Alright.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, see?
Okay, one more thing, just sorry. Real quick. Um, the, the most important thing that I forgot to mention was they stress the importance of making sure you vote, right? Make sure you vote. Whatever you decide, vote. And I just wanted to quickly mention that we have ballot box locations at the Hawthorne Library, Olympus Park, Memorial Park, Wise Burn Library and Dodger, no, I'm sorry, Bajer Park. Make sure you go to one of those locations and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, alright. So uh, thank you, uh Mayor Protem for bringing up the urgent care, uh reintroducing this and uh going forward with a new vigor and being able to give it an extra push, see what we can, we can do. So it'd be glad to, I'd be glad to support anything related to that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm, I'll be glad to support anything that, yeah. Didn't it wasn't that clear or what did you say? Yeah, we supported, of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Remember the caveat says, and I'm just kidding. No, Proposition thirty-six is very important. Please vote for this. Uh, whoever the advocates were for the Proposition forty-seven were very sly and, you know, making you think that that was somehow going to help. But it's actually exacerbated the problems when it comes to shoplifting and other uh things that should be marked as felonies being uh marked as uh misdemeanors. So it doesn't give our police officers the uh, the backup, the uh, the support to be able to go through with arresting and penalizing and uh, because it, people, I work at a jail, guys. I work at a jail and all the tales and all the, the laughter and the mocking of the system that I hear from all the inmates going through my, through my care as a teacher. It's just uh mind-blowing. Uh, they're getting a free pass for a lot of different things and they're celebrating it right there in front of me in my class when I'm trying to teach them astronomy. They're, they bring these things up amongst themselves, making sure that I get to hear that. Like to brag that they got away with this and that. So you know what, it's, we just need to have some penalties back in place. And hopefully we can return to where we were even before. Uh, but Proposition thirty-six is a start, so please vote yes on thirty-six. Um, the Senior Center, um, that, that was a great event. Uh, my colleagues were there. Um, of course, uh, uh, Councilmember Montero sends his regards and uh sends his regards to the group here. So uh, Mayor Protem was there, uh, and uh Councilwoman Angie Reyes English and Councilmember David Patterson were there. And uh, we were very happy to see that a lot of the community members were there because this is an exciting thing. Um, you know, we, we have some, like she said, pretty soon we'll be uh, attending this thing. What was like? Damn, twenty, twenty years from now or something or whatever it is. But the thing is for all, all those who can take benefit of, of it right now, it's going to be really, really nice. The technol- technological advances that we have, the two-story uh layout, all the ADA compliances, all the activities and all the different fun things that are going to be there for the seniors to take advantage of are going to be awesome. It's a, our community, seniors deserve that type of thing. Um, I did want Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to talk about Fiesta in the Park, but she deferred it to me. And I mentioned, what I mentioned earlier was that uh, the councilwoman and myself, we organized the first one last year and it was a great success. It was fun. Uh, what could we classify it as a, a grassroots type of celebration? And people were having fun, dancing and, you know, passing out the food and it was good, you know, it was just simple fun, nothing. And that wasn't a big production. It was fun. So uh, we're hoping to repeat that and maybe exceed the attendance. So if you guys could go ahead and promote this event, it's going to be great. From six to eight on September the twenty-seventh, which is this Friday, right?
Yeah.
That's going to be fun. So try to make your way over there.
In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the important key right there. Alright, so that's mine. Then on October fifth, we're going to be having the Touch a Truck. And yeah, sure, I'm the one that like kind of uh brought the idea forth, but it's a community event now and we've adopted it. And uh, I just encourage you guys all to bring your, your uh, the little ones and, and your family, your grandkids, your nieces, your, your um, your friends, tell your friends, neighbors, whoever has kids to come out. It's basically all, all the things that we used to do as kids. Remember we guys, we used to play with the Toca Trucks? With uh, the big one, the dump truck that you just load up with all the, you know, the dirt. And then you had the police vehicles and all the matchbox and then the Hot Wheels. Yeah, and we used to play with them. And so for the kids, it's a big thing still, you know, to be able to see all those uh vehicles in their actual size and their grandeur and how big they are. So it's, it's a pretty astounding thing. So uh, there's also going to be trucks. Uh, well, like I said, the trucks, there's going to be books. Some books might be given out still or possibly, or there's going to be just some books for sale, um arts and crafts and a lot of other different things. So please make sure to come out to that. Um, cybersecurity is very important. We can't dismiss it. Um, and something that we got to take a look at. I, uh, the AI, I'm sorry, is a big danger. Uh, I think we really have to be careful with that. Uh, I think it was ruled out irresponsibly. And I think uh those people who develop that should be held to accountable for anything that happens in the future. So that's my personal opinion, not a reflection of the city council up here. Uh, so we really need to be careful. We need to look, see, and uh there are some healthy applications for AI, but uncontrollable, all controlled could cause a lot of evil even. So let's just be very careful and mindful. Okay, so what else? What else? That's it?
Can I finish too? One thing?
Yeah, go ahead and then I'll finish a couple.
Okay. Um, if any, if anyone's interested, I'm going to be part of a panel discussion this Thursday at seven PM at Downtown, Downtown um LA Club. It's uh Faith and Work in LA. It's uh Reimagining Work, Volume Twelve, Public Policy. And I'm going to be um speaking on a panel with uh Sheriff Luna and some other elected officials, um, how we navigate um faith and policy. So that's going to be uh quite an interesting discussion. And then um, on Sunday, October sixth, uh, I was named Democrat of the Year with the LA County Democratic Party and I'll be honored that evening at uh, at uh Downtown LA, or I should say, no Downtown, uh LAX. So, the, the sixth of October. Yeah.
Awesome, wonderful.
Thank you.
And uh, the community is looking forward to the Verbena this coming Sunday. Uh, I'm going to make every intention to be there, kind of give you heads up that uh, something that had uh came up for me. But uh, it's a great event. There's a lot of good dancing. At some point, historically, the Cuban Festival, that we traditionally call it, uh, had Celia Cruz come into town, right? And Oscar De León, did he come too? Wow, look at that, man. That's like, that preceded me uh when I, before I took my class, salsa classes. So I wouldn't know when I, what to do out there, but um, and that was down on one hundred and twentieth on the, in Crenshaw, on the northwest corner where they have the, the twenty-four hour fitness, LA Fitness or? Not, right there? No. On the northwest corner of one-twentieth and Crenshaw, over there near Holly Park where you guys are from. Okay, so it was, it just, it was different beast back then, North of Grumman. So there was a lot of uh empty space to be able to have a lot of events. But as you can see, we're developing and there's just not a lot of room to develop. So we just have to be careful what we bring. Okay? So thank you guys all for being here and uh, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty, seven forty-nine.